Call the July 2014 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. I am chairing tonight in place of Chairman Cook, who is doing his duties as the Overland Park Convention and Visitors Bureau Chair, visiting Overland Park's sister city, Biedheim Bissergen, Germany, with a delegation from Overland Park. I think I heard the other day that Biedheim Bissergen is celebrating its 250th year as a chartered city and its 800th year as a city-village marketplace. So, when we talk about long-term planning later in the strategic planning, we have nothing on our friends in Biedheim Bissergen. The next thing I want to start with, I'm going to end with this too, August 5th is a primary election. I would urge everybody in this room and everybody watching to vote on August 5th. Advanced voting will start 14 days in advance of that, but it's important to vote. It's not only a privilege and a right, I think it's everybody's duty, so hopefully we will see a large turnout, larger turnout than predicted on August 5th. Roll call and recognition of visitors?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Mark Ferguson, and Carrie Norbury.
Next thing on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes, plus a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair has a discretion to limit comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful, civil, and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. There are no registered speakers for the open forum for tonight's agenda, so we'll move on to awards and recognitions. It's my understanding there are no awards and recognitions-
That's correct.
... tonight's meeting, so we'll move on to the college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a very slow month. It typically gets a little slow in the summer, however, with the closure of the state's fiscal year, that is really kind of the news. This is an election year, and I'll speak briefly about that in a minute, but the news coming out of the state is that the state ended the fiscal year $338 million, less than what was projected. You shouldn't get too alarmed, at least for this year, there's still $350 million in the bank account. That number varies depending on who you talk to, but that will give us a little bit of cushion throughout the start of the new fiscal year. The concern starts happening in fiscal year 2016, where it's projected that if things continue on the track that we're on, and that means no future reduced amounts in revenue collection, that we will end the fiscal year in 2016 with approximately $30 million in the bank. That's a fraction of 1% of an ending balance, and the state statute requires that the state maintain a 7% ending balance. Now, keep in mind that that is always amendable by the state legislature, but the practice has been to return to a 7% ending balance. That brings about discussions then at the state level of what do we do in the coming year. It's anticipated, or at least there is some conversation that has begun, that state agencies should think about a 5% reduction in their budget. I think that that number is extremely conservative, and given some of the financial woes that we could be facing, that number could increase much more. There's no real number on it, but some people are even saying as much as 10% at the state agency level. So that's just something to keep in mind as you have budget discussions and as we plan for what is coming in the next year. There is a couple of laws that have been, had some confusion, as is the case, any time new laws are passed or there are clarifications or amendments to statutes, there are frequently questions or loopholes that weren't anticipated, and there are a couple of those out there. Just for your information, there is already talk on social media of potential changes or amendments needed for some of the gun laws, particularly as it relates to signage. I mentioned that and don't really have any of the details, just so that you're aware that this issue is not only not going away, but any time you open a statute, again, you never know what happens when you open up a statute. The other interesting thing about that particular issue is, as defined in the law across the gun concealed carry issue, it speaks to what is adequate security. The Legislative Coordinating Council did not act on any policies related to concealed carry in the state Capitol, which means that even though there is a X-ray machine, a magnetometer like you would walk through at an airport, and wands, you are still permitted now to carry into the Capitol if you hold a concealed carry license. You are not allowed to open carry in the Capitol. But I just mentioned that out of interest, because the law particularly states that if you provide adequate security, armed guards and such, that you can prohibit the carry of weapons in a building. And so that is the current practice in the state Capitol. Having said that, the Legislative Coordinating Council meets on the 24th of this month, which is, I believe, is a week from today. They could address that issue further. I don't believe that's what they'll do, and I'll mention what their plans are, at least the known plans are at this point, for that meeting. The other bill or law that has become law as of July 1 is the Property Tax Transparency Bill, and there are some legislators that think that when they pass that, that it meant the law would cap property taxes at the local level. It simply means that any board choosing to increase their budget or keep an increased valuation amount when approving a budget must take a vote and publish that vote in the publication of record. So I anticipate, and we thought this even when the bill passed, that there will probably be future legislation dealing with that particular issue that seeks a more Tabor-like environment, which would, in fact, in some form cap or prohibit a local governing body from raising revenue on their own without some type of legislative approval. So we'll be watching for that in the coming legislative session. And then finally, I mentioned the Legislative Coordinating Council is meeting on the 24th of this month. They have not set their summer calendar yet. That is what they will be doing on July 24th. There is a very brief list of committee study issues over the course of the summer. That list hasn't been made public yet, but there are no surprises, I'm told, and that the information or the issues and topics that the interim committees will be addressing are pretty standard in nature, just simple joint committee action. There are no special committees requested, no investigative committees that we're aware of at this point. So that's essentially what's going on, as people look towards the August 5th deadline for the primary, and I'll certainly have a lot to report about in the August meeting about sort of the outcomes of the statewide primaries. There are 15 races that will be decided in the primary. They have no general. And so that, along with some of the other issues that come out of the August 5th primaries, will all give you an update in August.
Trustee questions for Mr. Carter? I would just, I'm very sensitive to acronyms, because I think a lot of people watching don't know what they mean, but Tabor-like is the tax care bill of rights, which would be an effort in the legislature to prohibit local, municipal, or other local governments like ours from raising our own revenues at a rate that we believe they should be raised, and instead setting those in Topeka, setting a limit in Topeka.
That or, and/or initiative and referendum combined. Correct.
Thank you. Mr. President? The next item on the agenda is committee reports. The first committee is the Management Committee, which I chaired, and we met on July 2 at 8:00. Minutes and supporting documentation on pages 1 through 26 of the board packet. The first item that requires action are three separate agreements regarding the BNSF Railway and our National Academy of Railroad Sciences program. Last month, we adopted a master agreement with BNSF, anticipating that within that master agreement, there would be specific work, statement of work agreements that would establish certain individual understandings between the college and BNSF. There are two of those in your agenda packet today. Statement of work number two pertains to the provision of credit classes to BNSF employees, and statement of work number three pertains to defining joint works between National Association of Railroad Sciences, our academy, and BNSF to determine who can use certain joint curriculum and other programs and information that's created. The final agreement is an agreement with Carl Sandburg College in Illinois to allow them to use our materials and curriculum and programming as a licensee in exchange for payments to Johnson County Community College. We have three recommendations on those. I've been authorized by General Counsel that we can consider all those three together if you'd like. Does anybody have a problem with considering them at once?
Nope.
Then I will move all three of them at once. It is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve statement of work number two under the Master Training Services Agreement pertaining to JCC's National Academy of Railroad Sciences provision of credit courses to BNSF employees and general JCC college students. It is also the recommendation to adopt statement of work number three under the Master Training Services Agreement to identifying joint works between the parties and authorizing the college to sub-license joint works to third-party colleges as part of the NARS-certified training program, and setting forth services provided by each party as part of the new certified training program. And finally, it's a recommendation to approve the NARS-certified training program agreement with Carl Sandburg College to certify the Carl Sandburg Railroad Training Program as a NARS-certified program, and I will make those motions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The second recommendation of the Management Committee deals with the working agenda, which is found on page three of the packet. Dr. Barbara Larson presented that packet. I think a couple of things that were added are a report on our cultural activities on the college from a business perspective, and also a report on our grants program, which as we see later in the agenda, I think last year, there were nearly $2 million worth of grants received by the college in fiscal year 2014, and so we would get some reports to the Management Committee and onto the board with respect to how our grants are handled. One thing was deleted from the report, but it's folded into one of the existing, one of the new categories, so we haven't removed anything from the agenda. We moved the IT report from a monthly report to a quarterly report, and other than that, there aren't any changes, I don't think. Are there any questions about the working agenda as presented? If not, I'll move to adopt the recommendation of the Management Committee for the 2014-2015 Management Committee Working Agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have a couple of routine matters that we do at our first meeting after the fiscal year. Organization and resolution agreement with UMB Bank. Don Perkins presented annual approvals for our banking relationship to designate UMB as the official depository bank for college funds, and to revise the organization resolution and agreement designating authorized signers. You have the signers in your packet on page four and five. It is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve UMB as our designated bank, and the organization resolution agreements for fiscal year 2015, as shown in the actual documents on page 15 through 17 of the board packet, and I will make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is a corporate certificate of authority for US Bank to approve a contract between our financial aid office and the affiliated computer services to provide billing services and record keeping related to the federal Perkins loan program. In conjunction with the processing of the payments, it is necessary for the college to maintain a depository account with US Bank. It functions as a clearing account, with the balance being transferred monthly to the college's depository account at UMB Bank. It is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the board adopt the recommendation of college administration to extend the current banking service agreement and designate US Bank as the official depository bank for federal Perkins loan program for our fiscal year 2015, and adopt the corporate certificate of authority shown on pages 18 to 21 of the board packet, and I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is, again, Mr. Perkins recommended transfer a year-end of funds from the 2014 general fund budget to Johnson County Adult Education Bridges classes in the amount of The adult education program consists of not-for-credit course offerings, so the related expenditures must be recorded in the Adult Supplementary Education Fund, but state statute allows us to transfer money from the general fund to the supplemental fund to support that program, and that's the purpose of this motion. It is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to authorize the transfer of $41,668 from the general fund to the Adult Supplementary Education Fund as permitted under KSA 71-614, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. This is almost beginning to be fun. The next item is the consideration of publication of the budget for purposes of a public hearing at our August meeting, found at page six and seven of your packet. The notice of public hearing is on page 22, states that the board will hold its public hearing on our fiscal year 2015 budget on August 14 at our next regular meeting. After the public hearing in August, the budget must be filed with the county and the state. In addition, as Mr. Carter referenced, in 2014, the legislature passed House Bill 2047, amending the statute regarding budget publication requirements. House Bill 2047 includes a notice of vote publication for those jurisdictions who increase their property taxes beyond a computed limit, which is last year's number adjusted by the Consumer Price Index. If you have a tax levy greater than $1,000, you have to publish in the county newspaper notice of the governing body's vote to adopt the budget if the budget that is adopted increases property taxes beyond last year's tax levy as adjusted by the CPI. And based on the assessed valuation increases in Johnson County, our proposed budget as presented for publication would be subject to the notice of vote provisions contained in House Bill 2047. I think before I offer the motion, Don, do you want to run through one more time the schedule of what has happened since our last meeting, when we adopted the guidelines that led to what you have produced to publish, and what will happen between now and our next meeting?
Sure. After this meeting, I'll have the signed summary page that I can give to Julie Haas. It'll be published in a paper next week. Needs to be there for 10 days before we have a hearing. That hearing will happen at the same time, we're scheduled to do it at the same time as the August board meeting, I believe it was August 14. And after the hearing, then the board will have an opportunity to approve that budget. After that occurs and before the 25th of the month, I will file it with the county and the state, and we will be finished with that part of the process.
And the budget summary on page 22 of the board packet basically includes all of the assumptions and principles that we had adopted as a board last month at our meeting.
It does. There are two primary things that this document and this whole legal budget does. Number one is it sets the mill levy, or at least it sets the parameters for the mill levy. The other thing is it sets some legal restrictions for our spending, and you're right, this is all consistent with the discussions and with the information that we've talked about over the past few months, and that we approved, and you approved, consistent with a budget you approved in May.
In last month, I think everybody will recall, the discussion centered around the increased assessed valuation based on the county appraisers' estimates, which he provides to you, and a discussion and a decision to include a .1 rollback of the mill levy, and those are all included in the summary report?
They are.
Okay. And Dr. Larson, did you have some comments you wanted to make before we talk about a motion?
Sure. The additional assessed valuation from the 5.5% to the 6.1% is included, and that adds $377,000 in new revenues. Additional motor vehicle tax increase adds $398,000, so essentially cancels out, I'll say, the effect of the .1 mill rollback, which was roughly $800,000. Now, the new information to follow up to Mr. Carter's report is now planning for a potential probable likely 5% cut, which for us is almost $1.1 million out of our $21.5 million that we receive in state aid. And of course, if we get to the point of doubling that, obviously you can now talk in the $2 million range. So certainly, at this point, we are planning for a mid-year cut of the 5% to be prudent.
And is it, when you say mid-year, you mean mid-year fiscal year 2015?
Correct.
The alternative is that the legislature next year, in its legislative session for fiscal year 2016 budget, could include cuts if it has enough money to get to there. I'm looking at Mr. Carter, who's nodding reluctantly, because I'm not being precise enough. Are there any questions, anybody about the budget summary that would be published and then would be the subject of the public hearing on August 14, after which time we could adopt it in that form or with amendments? Mr. President?
Trustee Musial, is August 14 the last possible date for any changes? I mean, after August 14, can other changes be made?
We can always amend the budget.
That's not a desirable path to take, is it?
It's doable, but it would be, I'm not sure about the timeframe, but we would want to certainly do that before the actual taxes were set, before they have to send out the bills.
If I can say one other thing? The, thank you. If I can call on Mr. Carter. When will we have a better idea? They're talking 5%, but that could be on the low side if things continue in the direction that they're continuing. So it could be perhaps 10%, would be like 2.2 million, but when are the budget projections going to make it clear that we're at a, you know, a bad spot, or it's not going to be as bad as we think?
Those conversations begin in earnest this fall. We won't know until the governor's budget recommendations, which come out typically around the State of the State address, which is the second week or so in January. That's when we'll have a sense as to what the recommendations from the administration are. And there's kind of two conversations going here. There's one that's mid-year, and then there's one that is the effect of the budget. The governor reserves the right at any point when budget numbers get to a certain percentage to make allotments, which are typically across the board, and that could result in a mid-year cut, a percentage of which we probably don't know, but I certainly think that for fiscal year 2016, which is becoming budget year that the state will be discussing, we'll start a 5% reduction and then move from there.
So the bottom line is, is the cutting back .1 basically is negated by the increase of the property valuation. It's more or less a break-even deal, but as things progress with the state, then it could be a little bit more problematic for us if we've got to make up 2.2 million at the worst, right now, a worst-case scenario.
Questions from the board? Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to get this straight in my head, that we increased taxes, we voted as a board to increase taxes to help out with our budget, increase property taxes with our property mill tax levy, and then the state comes in and caps that, so we can't get as much as we thought we could. Is that-
They haven't done that, correct? They have not done that yet?
Well, but we have to-
It could happen.
We have to do certain things, jump through certain hoops to get to that amount. And then we could be looking at 5% to 10% based on whatever happens in the next legislative year, at least 5% probably. And there's an election on August 5th, is that right? I just want to make sure that I'm kind of getting everything straight in my head, that we're not able to respond to the needs of our students because of what's happening in Topeka.
I think, I'll try to summarize. If the legislature passed a budget that includes $21.5 million-ish for Johnson County Community College for fiscal year 2015, July 1, 14 to June 30, 2015, revenues, the revenue stream has not come in as anticipated, in fact, was $338 million short in fiscal year 2014 for the state. If it continues to be below projections, which is what the legislature thought was going to fund us and other community colleges and K-12 and everybody else, the governor reserves the right, I love it's called allotments, it acts like you're getting more money. He has the right, the statutory power, to make cuts during the year, and then next year, when the legislature comes in to figure out our fiscal year 2016 budget, if the revenues are still bad, they will likely cut back the support for Johnson County Community Colleges and other state programs in some percentage so that the revenues match what they're spending. So we do have two tracks. One is they could cut us during this fiscal year, which is what you're hearing maybe from the Board of Regents. The other is that if revenues are bad, they can always cut us or increase us or hold us harmless, as they did last year, in the budget process of the legislature. And I appreciate Dr. Larson and Dr. Sobchak bringing up the fact that if those are out there, we need to think about, we need to think about when they might happen and how we might need to respond to, you know, to prepare our college so that we can continue to provide our services. I suspect we'll know more by August 14. We'll know a little bit more. We'll have another, we have another month's worth of revenues to look at?
Well, you also have September and October, which are traditionally bump months for late filers.
Right.
And I could give you a picture.
Right. We will have to pass the budget next month in order to get it published timely, so we'll have a little bit more information, but budget issues will continue to take a lot of our time and effort, so. If there aren't any more questions in the board cabinet?
Just one final question, Mr. Chair. Being held harmless, that's two years in a row we're held harmless, correct?
I believe that's right.
We've been very fortunate when it comes to the state. I mean, we are extremely appreciative of the state when they gave us a two-year budget projection, so we were able to, and there were cuts in year two of that, 1.5%, which they did not execute. So they have held us harmless. If you look at our state revenues, they've actually been, you know, slanting upward. They've been very positive. Now, that's been great for us and for community colleges, but the challenge is, is that kind of puts us first in line, should things go in the other direction, because we really haven't paid a price at this point, at least from our perspective.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, I just have friends and clients who are the first to tell me that when an expenditure remains flat for a year or a couple of years or a time, that that's a loss financially. So if we're being held harmless, quote, held harmless, I'm just trying to understand that term. It sounds like we were the benefactor somehow, something that occurred, but I understand it could have been worse. I just wonder, so two years in a row now that the expenditure from the state has remained the same.
Right.
Correct? That's what held harmless means? I just want to clarify that.
The way it works is that basically, you get funding from the state in so many different ways, but the fact is, over the years, institutions with declining enrollments have been held harmless. In other words, they have not seen a decline in their allotment, the major block, the block grant. That was not in our, that did not work for us during those years when we had, you know, significant growth in enrollment. Now, things are a little bit different, so it's a whole different ballgame.
So in a way, we're fortunate because of our declining enrollment that the expenditure has stayed the same?
One way of looking at it.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try the motion, and if we can have more- All right, I'm going to try the motion, and if we can have more discussion, if, if there is a need for some. "It is a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize publication of the notice of public hearing for the 2014-2015 budget and budget summary, subject to adjustment as actual expenditure figures are available. Furthermore, it is a recommendation of the management committee that the board accept the recommendation of college administration to authorize publication of the, quote, 'notice of vote,' unquote, should it be required under the provisions of House Bill 2047." And I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
A second?
Is there any further discussion or question? If not, all in favor, say aye. Trustee Stewart?
Yeah, just question. It is, and I think Don said this, the, the 1/10 reduction is what's going to be published as our intent to vote on that.
That's right.
All right.
Any further discussion or questions?
Might just comment, I think we need to wait and see what the state's going to do. And, you know, that's the point of our reserves, is to, to meet unintended expenditure reduction in revenues, and we have enough reserves to weather the storm for a while and, at least and to see what happens till next year. And then we'll have to look, I think, at a combination. You're going to have to look at potential mill levy increase, potential tuition increase, and potential reductions or expenditure reductions, a combination. I don't think we need to look at this as we're going to raise the mill levy to cover whatever the governor does, is my personal opinion. So, but I, I think we don't need to panic right now. I think, I appreciate Barbara, Larson, and Joe being proactive and bringing this to our attention and to, to look at this, but, you know, one year doesn't make the difference for us. We also, I don't know in your projections if you use 6 percent as the assessed value increase. You didn't use it in future years, so.
Click the button to get it started.
I think we're going to see those kind of increases for a couple more years, so I think we've got some additional revenues coming in. Our biggest threat is the cap on, if they cap us at the, the amount of assessed valuation or the amount of dollars we can bring into the, the mill levy, that's probably our biggest risk, so.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. I agree with you, and I assume you will also let us know when it is time to panic. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. The next two recommendations from the management committee have to do with bid items. Two recommendations, one to replace vehicles and one to renovate restrooms in the OCB building. Those are in your packets. The first one on the vehicles is at page 10 and 11. Recommendation of the management committee that the board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve low bids of $73,323 from Midway Ford Truck Center, $21,582 from Alatha Ford, $35,127 from Shawnee Mission Ford, for a total expenditure of $130,032 for vehicles, and I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just say in the management committee packet, where the detail was there, we're replacing a couple of 2004s and 2008, so these are vehicles that have used up their life and we're getting trade-in value for most of them. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Next, the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid of $99,930 from MC Power Companies, Inc., plus an additional $9,993 to allow for contingencies, for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $109,923 for OCB restroom renovations, and I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. That is the, the final action item. I did want to alert the board if you, in last Saturday's Johnson County section of the Star, there was a letter from one of the bidders on the LED light fixture bid that is in your packet. The bid suggested that this company was the low bidder and, and was disappointed that it did not receive the recommendation of the college and did not receive the bid. I have received information from Dr. Larson and from Mr. Borders about, about that, and I think it's sufficient to say that on all the characteristics that we looked for in the bid process, including price, quality, longevity of the lights, and overall cost savings over a 10-year basis, the bidder that won the bid was, in fact, the low bid. And the person that was disappointed in the bid wasn't satisfied that we had, didn't like a 10-year window of cost savings, and that's what we've used on other bids. So I thought it was important that we respond publicly, that we very much cherish low bids when they meet all our specifications and they truly are the lowest-cost alternative with the highest quality over time. So if anybody has any more questions about that, Mitch is here and Dr. Larson is here. But I just thought it was important that we talk about that at, at our public meeting.
Thank you. I, I saw that, and I'm glad you addressed that. I've got a lot of confidence in Mitch Borchers and the process that he goes through. We've been through this a number of times with other bidders, and the research always comes back that there were other circumstances that make the, the other bidder the best bidder, and I think we're very, very careful with that process to get the best value for the college, so, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. The management committee received reports from staff. Patrick Russell Allison reported on the strategic plans, I think he's done to all the committees. We had an insurance program update from Tom Clayton, a sole source report from Mitch Borders. Denise Moore provided a monthly update on information services, and Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects. Those reports for Ms. Moore and Mr. Hayes are found at pages 23 through 26. And that concludes the report of the management committee. Are there any questions about the management committee? Thank you. Next on the agenda is learning quality. Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, July 7, 2014. Mr. Anderson assures us it was the fastest meeting in the history of Learning Quality Committee, 11 minutes.
I think we were pushing 11.
11 minutes. Bill Brown, the Dean of Technology, shared information regarding BNSF's Statement of Works II and III. The first agreement was discussed at the June 2, 2014 meeting, Learning Quality Meeting. The SOW II defines the relationship between JCC and NARS and BNSF regarding credit class usage of BNSF proprietary materials, as well as their continued assistance to provide JCC with their expertise. And industry training is apparently very different from what K-BOR curriculum requires for accredited classes, and Bill shared that Terry has skillfully accomplished those tasks. Carl Sandberg, Sandberg College in Galesburg, Illinois, has a large maintenance and repair facility. Locomotive, mechanical, and electrical courses are offered that we do not offer at our NARS facility. Their site will be certified and allow broadening of what NARS does and expand it to be a National Railroad Science Program. Patrick Russell Allison also gave a report on the strategic planning implementation. And then Mr. Anderson, Andy, and the committee thanked Karen Zindarsik for her diligent work on the committee, because Karen will be retiring at the end of July. So that concludes my report. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Cross? Anything on human resources, or learning quality, I mean, Mr. President? I didn't ask you on management. You'd already talked. Human resources, Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very short meeting as well. We talked a little bit about Dr. Allison's strategic plan update that you all have here, and it's coming along quite well, looking forward to the implementation stage. And because it's the first meeting of the year, we have one recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the Human Resources Committee working agenda for 2014-2015, as is shown subsequently in the board packet, and I make that motion.
Second? Been moved and seconded to adopt the working agenda for the Human Resources Committee. Are there any, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Any other questions on learning, on human resources? If not, we're ready for the President's Recommendations for Action, and unfortunately, the first one on that is the Treasurers' Report, which I will handle. Your packet includes the Treasurers' Report from pages 31 to 41. Treasurer Lindstrom, Trustee Lindstrom, is out of town on business today, so I'm covering for him. There are a few highlights on the bottom of page 40. There are the cash balances that we look at monthly. At May 31, we had a book balance of 67, 5.5 million, with 17.7 million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of $49.8 million. We received Advalore property tax distributions of 31 million, 31.3 million in June. That will be included in next month's report. The college made payment on three series of revenue bonds, 2006, 2011, 2012. I'm trying to remember where I put those. I asked staff, those are revenue bonds that paid for the student center, or are paying for the student center, the childcare center, and our three parking garages. So we continue to pay those off through revenues generated. All the expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. So it is a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ended May 31, 2014, subject to audit, and I would so move.
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion about the Treasurers' Report? Anything from the President? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Strategic Plan, Dr. Sobchak?
Thank you, Trustee Musol. On page 42, you see a recommendation for the college's strategic plan. Also in front of you, you have a color copy of the plan at this point. I'd like to ask Patrick to come up to the podium real quickly. We're on record pace here, so we want to keep it going. We're not going to ask, I'm not going to ask you to take us through the plan, but I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Can you tell us exactly how this ties in to the HLC equip requirements?
Which are what?
Yeah. What are the acronyms?
He said to keep it short, so I'll try. So HLC is, is obviously the, the accreditor for Johnson County Community College, and we are required to be accredited with the Higher Learning Commission because otherwise our students are not federal financial aid eligible. So what we have done is we have made sure that the strategic planning process is compatible, is completely compatible with the process that the Higher Learning Commission has, is mandating. So they're integrated plans, and that's, that's a great thing because, you know, that way you don't have to tell everybody, oh, here's one plan, and here's another plan, and another plan, and another plan. Yeah.
And then Patrick, what are the plans for the key performance indicators? How are they going to be a part of the strategic plan?
So the, the key performance indicators measure student success, broadly speaking, and there's also a financial metric in there. And they, they are pretty much measuring how the strategic plan and how everything we do actually here at the college, so also operations, how that benefits our students. And if we execute the strategic plan well, then we should see movement in those key performance indicators.
And how does this process that we've just undertaken differentiate itself from past processes we've, we've done?
So we followed, we, we obviously looked at a lot of other strategic planning processes before and during the strategic planning process. And we, we wanted a strategic planning process that allows us to plan from the outside in as opposed to, you know, the inside out, or build it and they will come. So we, we really made sure that our community members were involved in the, in the process, that our students were involved in the process. And then obviously, we also looked at, at the internal works of the organization with the help of our faculties and staff members.
And I remember at the foundation presentation, they were kind of scoffing at the length of time it takes us to do this, or the length of time it takes higher ed to pull something like this off. And your response was, was a good one. Could you kind of repeat that one for us?
Absolutely. So I, I think as a public institution, we have the, we have the duty to really go through a thorough and public planning process. We can't just sit, sit in a boardroom and say, okay, here it is, and, and let's publish it, because we are here to, to obviously serve the community and to serve our students, so they have to be included in the, in the planning process. That's very important.
All right. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Oh, and one last question. How many people were involved in this?
I haven't counted them all, but quite a number, yeah.
Yeah, a good, we had really good participation, not only from members on, within our community, but also outside of the campus itself, too. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Trustee.
Patrick, how many ballpark, how many people ballpark?
So everybody, so community members, students, faculty and staff members. We are probably looking at over 1,000, I would say.
1,000 people had input into this process?
Yep. Over 1,000, yeah.
All right.
Roughly.
Roughly?
Yes.
Is that an appropriate response from an IR person to say roughly when it comes to a number?
Well, actually, if you really want to know it, I could.
That's okay. Okay, thanks, Patrick. That's great.
Like a primary election turnout.
That's great, thank you. I just want to point out a couple of things in the plan. You've all seen this, as Patrick has presented to every subcommittee. If you go to page nine, you can see the planning process and then the plan implementation and accountability part of the process laid out in eight easily, it's easy to follow steps here. And I want to point out on point, on number six, the word monitoring, and number seven, outcomes report. For a strategic plan, it's so easy to put these things on the shelf, never to look at them again. But in this case, we've been very careful to make sure that we'll be monitoring it and also measuring outcomes as well. If you go to page 17, you'll see the SWOT analysis. What's fascinating about this is that our weaknesses are there, one, to serve as inspiration for us to know that we have plenty of work to do, but also to demonstrate transparency. So we've laid all this stuff out, and one of the things about this process is that it's been very transparent with regard to the information collected and how we presented it. And lastly, if you go to page 28 and 21, the whole plan's on one page. And if you go across the top, you see the four goals, and each one of those goals are some key words. The first goal, most important one, of course, is student success. The second one is being able to respond to stakeholders' needs. Goal three is about communication, and goal four is about efficiency. And so underneath these key goals, the tasks are broken out, and they're identified and responsibility is allocated, not just to members of cabinet, and you can see Judy and Barbara's name under those four goals, but also liaisons to each one of those tasks, as well as a project lead. So there's responsibility and accountability across the, the entire organization. We'd really like to commend all the people who've been involved in this, and I know Patrick's kind of the face of the strategic plan and has done a great job getting this in line, along with the people in his area. But also, this reflects a lot of work and time by so many people throughout the college who all should be commended for doing that, because they've also got jobs to do, and this is a part of that effort. So again, we're very proud of this. We think it's unique in a sense that it's specific, it's easy to track, and it's got specific allocation measurements, or, or accountability measurements on this. So we hope you feel the same way.
Questions for Patrick or Dr. Sobchak? I know we've all seen this multiple times as it went through the process and had input into it. Trustee Stewart?
Yeah, just curious, on page 23, Patrick, that key performance indicator, that really doesn't mean much to me. There's no comparison. I don't, is a 5.5 instructional effectiveness good? Is that on a scale of 10? Those are my, if you give us the numbers by themselves, it's kind of hard for us to interpret what you're telling us.
Yeah. I, I would say that is, that is true. We, we have an annual presentation that we will also have this year where we will update you exactly on the, the trends, and, yeah.
Well, we have comparison to other institutions as well? Okay. So this is just?
Yeah. It's an abbreviation.
That's a snapshot.
This is a teaser?
Yeah, well, I thought that, that's.
I'm not sure how this was going to be used, but if you published this, I don't think that we would get much value out of it. People wouldn't understand. In fact, some people may say, you're not doing very well.
Well, I, I think we, we are very open with key performance indicators. They are published on the college's website, and they've also been published, I think, in, in committee meetings or any minutes before.
Yes. I guess my point is, I wouldn't include this.
Here?
No, I would not include this here without that other data, because this means nothing. I mean, it means a lot to you, but to me, it's 39 percent, is that?
And if you recall.
It's an F.
Yeah, well, depends where you go.
It may be great, but I don't know that, I do a little bit.
But in most of our publications, you've noticed the trend. We've done the graphs, we've done the bars, we did it in the leak. We've done the graphs, we've done the bars, we did it in the leak application, in the little cards that you have that Dr. Cook had requested. You've got the entire graphs and the comparisons of those. So we want to keep that up.
Yeah, my point is, I don't know what you're, is this just for the board presentation?
This is a document.
If you're going to hand this to anybody else, I would like to see that table either removed or added with some information that people can interpret. So, other than that, it's great. You did a great job, and.
Thank you.
You're good with the numbers, so.
The trustees, comments or questions? I, I agree. I, I think to publish this, I would just take the column out and say, we have these indicators, and then there will be, there will be other places on the website, I assume this will be on the website, where you, we will publish the trends and kind of the, the index that we use to see if, where we started. Because we look, I think what's impressive is what you pointed out, Dr. Sobchak, is we, we looked at indicators, we didn't pick indicators where we were already at the ninety-nine percent tile. We picked indicators that are really indicators and realized we were not meeting our best efforts on some of those. And that's an uncomfortable thing to go through, to look inward and say, and I think it was uncomfortable to people on campus, to look inwardly and go, you know what, we're not as good at this as we maybe thought we were, and maybe we're a little complacent, and we're going to do better at it. So these are, these will be good when we look back at the original index and we see what the trends are. So, Dr. Corb.
Well, can I just ask you a question? Would a meaningful comparison be the average of our peer institutions, or, or something like that that would just say, this is kind of where everyone else is, and then this is where we fall? Would that be meaningful?
Yeah, a comparison to our peers and then our trend over time.
Okay.
And I, my comments, you know, criticism was hopefully constructive criticism. It wasn't, I don't have a problem with this. And I, I commend Dr. Sobchak for actually putting performance measurements out there. We've not done that, and to put them public, so, but let's put them in a format that people can, you know, hey, you're doing better than your peers, or your trend is up or down, and then we'll really have something to measure, what we're doing with the strategic plan.
And I think the strategic plan is sufficient just to say, we are going to measure these things. That's our strategic plan. And then as we implement it, we're going to say, we started here, we went to here, on all the various measures. And what I recall is when we met the first time, you talked about these indicators over in the Culinary Center on a Saturday morning retreat, you had a bunch of different places you looked for different indices for how we were going to measure ours. So it's not easy, it's not like investment where you take Standard and Poor's five hundred, but, so I think I'd leave them, I think I would just leave it out and say, our strategic plan is, we're going to, we're going to very carefully watch these things. Trustee Stewart?
And we are collecting all this information from the other colleges, and I don't know if, if it's appropriate, are we going to then be able to use those, or, I guess if we make them public to every, all the other colleges, then we can use those numbers.
Yeah, but when, when colleges share their information with us, they sign, or we sign a contract with them that we will not release their exact name, so we will have something like a.
Use show an average of the.
Yeah.
And Patrick's done a great job with that, like all the other publications that I've just seen. So I think there'll be, it'll be easy to come something. And then can you get perhaps a different photo of me with my fist clenched? It's just, it's a little menacing.
Page twenty-three.
I thought it was appropriate.
Yeah, was that it? Okay, good. I thought I was pounding my fist.
Maybe a different tie, Julie.
Any, Dr. Drummond?
As I said in the committee meeting, outstanding job. When you get a thousand people involved in a process, that is significant. And I think that, that's really important to make it what we want it to be. And on the, the charting that we're talking about, notice on the front page, we're going from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen. So if we could develop a chart that would go year by year to compare ourselves and peer institutions, I think that would help us to do some trend analysis. And to be able to test ourselves against our peers, most importantly to me is testing ourselves against ourselves. So if we can put all that in there, as that's available after the first year, then I think that's important for us to be able to do, and communicate to our publics that we're doing this, and then hold our own feet to the fire, that we just continue to improve. So just an outstanding job, everybody involved, so. Thank you for your processes.
I, I sent the management committee, Dr. Corb, Dr. Larson, and others who are taking on the ultimate responsibility for goals one, one through four, I guess it's the two of you are ultimately responsible for those. I reckon, that is a lot of work, coordinating, leading, managing, that's on top of what you already do. Some of that you're already doing. It's not like we didn't have a strategic plan, or we didn't have leadership, or we didn't have a goal. But we appreciate everybody that's listed on here, particularly, most strategic plans would not list individuals, I don't think, and say, you're going to get this done. It would be left blank, and sometime in the future, we'd, we'd figure it out, and if it never happened, we could all have plausible deniability. So we have not allowed you any plausible deniability.
We understand.
Okay. Any other questions before Dr. Sobchak reads the recommendation?
Before I read the recommendation, also, Julia, it's a great publication. It looks fantastic. It's absolutely to the point, and it's very easy to follow. And so thank you and your team for doing that. So the recommendation is, it is a recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees approve the strategic plan for Johnson County Community College for two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a motion? So moved? Second? Been moved and seconded to approve the strategic plan as presented for two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. We're ready for the monthly president's report.
All right. We're going to do a lightning round here, and then I'll wrap it up with a brief little report. As always, you have the monthly report to the board. In this case, it's seventeen pages of wonderfully single-spaced accomplishments and activities that's going here, going on here on campus. But today, the lightning rounders today are going to be Denise, Rex, and Dennis. So Denise, why don't you go first?
I wanted to talk a little bit about fiber, just a little. Back in two thousand and ten, as you know, the college implemented the three dollar per credit fee technology fund, technology infrastructure fund, which is to support the major infrastructure, networking, telecommunication, infrastructure improvements, to meet growing demand faster, bigger, more bandwidth, and support next generation technologies. Well, the good news is, is we've made great advances in that area. However, the demand just continues to grow. So everybody wants faster, more, and they want it available all the time. With all the wireless technologies and, and cloud computing and all the things that are coming, it just continues. But we have an opportunity that was presented to us to collaborate with the county and the city of Alatha and Lenexa on some fiber projects. And the first one that I want to tell you about is in conjunction, sorry about that, with the Gateway Project. If you're familiar with that, you've driven around all the orange colors. It's the street improvements between Renner and Ridgeview. And as a part of that, they're laying more fiber on College Boulevard. And that presents an opportunity for the counties and the cities, and we've been asked to participate as well, to extend the fiber from College Boulevard down to, on Ridgeway, or Ridgeview, down to one hundred and eighteenth Street, which is where the County Communications Center is located. So that particular project is somewhat time-sensitive because they're working on the, on it now, and it's seventy-five thousand dollars. And it will be shared among the county, three departments of the county, along with the cities of Lenexa, Alatha, and Johnson County. Our portion will be fifteen K. So that will be paid from the three dollar technology fund. The second project is actually replacing some fiber along College Boulevard for twenty-three thousand dollars. Those two projects together are going to provide a lot of benefits for the college into the future, now and into the future, and position us better for that growing demand and the technologies that are coming that we probably haven't even thought of yet. But first and foremost, I think probably the biggest thing it's going to do for us is it's going to give the college access to the county and city fiber that's throughout the Johnson County. And with that, we're going to be able to reduce our costs, we're going to be able to improve performance, increase our capacity, and then safeguard some of our critical assets. The other thing that, having these two projects together will get us to the County Communications Center, and the county has reserved space there for us to put a rack for disaster recovery purposes and backup purposes. And then also, it gives us access to some of the other CANREN institutions in Johnson County so that we can share costs, similar to how we've done with the KU Edwards campus. And then eventually, which will really be a cost savings for us, is we'll get fiber then, we'll be able to use the fiber to get us to the Alatha Health and Education Center. So just wanted to tell you about that. It is a, an investment that we're going to make, but it's a collaborative project with the county that I think will save us money and position us well for the future.
That's terrific. Thanks, Denise. Rex, we'll go from underground to above ground.
Above ground. When you talk about lightning, if any of you noticed the north side of the Commons Building, you'd think that lightning struck that building because of all missing brick and mortar and expansion joints. But no, that, no lightning strike, just as part of our annual masonry repair project. And this project involves three buildings, Common, GEB, and CSB Building. And these buildings are forty-two years old, so the repairs are necessary due to environmental elements and just aging of the, of the exterior brick. And some of the repairs include replacement of brick, tuck pointing, expansion joint replacement, widening of expansion joint, clip angle repairs, and just caulking of some of the, the metal that where the walls and, and the roof meet. So currently, it's going to take about, well, this project's going to take about six months to complete. We've been into it about three weeks, so, you know, another five months or so. But, you know, it's a very challenging project because there's a lot of noise, there's a lot of grinding, there's a lot of vibration, there's a lot of lifts going up and down. So it's really, it's a juggling act when you're doing this type of project and trying to maintain an excellent working environment. So I really want to take this opportunity to thank the campus community because they've been very gracious. I mean, I think they understand the importance of a project like this, and very few complaints, so.
That's because they don't know we have five more months of it.
No, while preparing them, and I'm thanking them in advance, so hopefully it'll make a, make a difference. But again, it's just part of our annual masonry repair, and this project's about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, so, and it's necessary. And I'm excited about it. I know, maybe I'm a strange guy, I get excited about bricks and mortar and that type of thing, but I'm excited because it's really helping us maintain our excellent standard for having great facilities. I, you know, it's a.
Rex, are we done with it after five months, or is this like?
No, this is annual.
The Golden Gate Bridge.
It's a cycle. Soon as we get this done, I'm preparing this year for next year's repairs. So it's never-ending. And a lot of people ask me to say, what's the number one facility challenge? And I, well, it's keeping water out of the building. So it's, doesn't matter whether it's building, if it's parking garages, asphalt and concrete, that's one of the biggest challenges. So I'm excited because this project will allow us to, to maintain our buildings.
That's terrific.
So then a few other projects we're doing this year. We're doing a couple of roof replacements, we're doing asphalt concrete repairs, we're repairing parking garages, and we're going to be starting on the OCB restroom renovation. So, so we're busy, but we're excited and, you know, happy that we have an opportunity to maintain our facilities, and again, maintain our excellent reputation.
Great. Thanks, Rex.
I know that we're excited about the trustee workday on the roof replacements. I think it's the third Saturday in August, everybody mark your calendars.
Thank you, Rex.
Dennis, before you get started, could you just give us, this is going to come out of left field, could you just give us a little, those are always the best ones, overview on summer enrollment, how it came out?
Summer enrollment came out very well. We, at the very last minute, caught up with ourselves for credit hours, which actually translates into we had more students taking a lot, or more of a load, a few less students as far as hit count, but more credit hours. So we came out point eight above what we did last summer. So it was very good news.
And what about, without naming names, what about some of our peer institutions in the region?
Well, just their initials only. MCC were, was close to double digits down, and KCC is double digits down, but we won't name those specifically. Very heavy losses for summer and for last spring as well, which is, again, a national trend right now. So by mitigating some things that we did for summer, I, I think we've, we've helped ourselves some. Now for fall, it's going to be, it's, it's a different story. It's a different population, and we continue to work on fall.
That's great. Thank you.
Rex, I get excited when you said common restoration. I thought you were talking about you're going to have open restoration, so I was going to sign up for that. Let me talk a little bit about a young man that's coming this fall. He's a returning student, he's been gone for three years. He spent several tours in Afghanistan. He has some issues that he needs to work on for, as he comes back, and it's, and it's good that Johnson County Community College has partnered with Veterans Administration to have counselor on campus. The Veterans Administration pays for that counselor, and they do not only returning veteran, but also vocational rehab for veterans, and also works on veterans' benefits as well. It's also good that Johnson County Community College provides a grant for returning veterans when they first come back returning. What we do is we provide a thousand, up to a thousand dollars for tuition and books to get them through that bridge, because if you've ever worked with the federal government, getting their benefits started and getting those checks rolling the very first time back is a little difficult, and it could be until October, November, before they see any money coming in. So we do that. It's also good that we have a group of veterans that support veterans on campus, and they've been extremely helpful with that. Veterans Administration pays for work-study students to help out veterans as they transition back. We've got a population of a little over five hundred veterans that are getting benefits at this institution. In the community, in the six-county community, there's a little over fifteen thousand returning veterans. In western Kansas, it's going to go down, in eastern Kansas, it's going to go up in the next ten, fifteen years. It is good that we've got a veterans' office, and it's, I think it's excellent that we've decided to go with a veterans' center. What's, the difference is, is that coordinated services for all the veterans that we've got coming in. We provide from the college resources for the veterans, and then we work in partnership with the Veterans Administration, the Department of Defense, and a couple other grants to get other services in. Certainly, I think it could be expanded, and I'll do that pitch right now. It can be expanded. We would love to be a regional center, and Dr. Sobchak and Dick Carter have gone to Washington, DC to talk about that kind of thing, because there's not real, there's not one in the Kansas City region area right now. And if you think about it, we're not a great regional armed forces area, but that's where they're going to be coming back to, is to the urban areas. So all I can say is that we are a veteran-friendly college. We have been for a long time, and we will continue to do that. And it's good that this young man gets the services here because I think he will be very successful. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. That's great. I had sent a veteran over to Dennis's area and was blown away by the response and the care and concern, as was the, the individual. It's, it's very exciting, so, thank you. I've been gone for about five or six days. I got back on campus this morning, and, and one of the first things I had the pleasure of doing was heading over to the, to the Nerman, and we had a panel there of Japanese business people headed by a former Japanese ambassador, Ken Shimanuchi. This group was put together by the Prime Minister of Japan to tour the United States, talk about the economic relationship between our country and Japan. They'll be here for three days in Kansas City, and it's a huge compliment to our college the fact that they've, they've come here, and they've held their panel discussion today. It was, it was fascinating. We felt very honored, and so I just wanted to share that with you, that this campus continues to be a place for people coming together to talk about important issues of the day. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending a seminar for first-time presidents at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. This program had been in place for twenty-five years. It brings together every year fifty presidents, fifty first-time presidents, and they're from major public universities, small public universities. major public universities, small public universities, small privates, medical schools. There were even heads of seminaries and rabbinical studies universities there. We had four community colleges, our own, River Valley in New Hampshire, the Colorado Mountain College, which is basically a two-year system, and Dabney South Lancaster in Virginia. Presidents came from, represented schools that are in Greece, Iraq, the United Arab Emirates, and Canada. And it was also attended by various presidents, sitting presidents from Harvard, the University of Maryland at Baltimore County, Bentley University, Davidson, Southern New Hampshire, Ramapo, Bridgewater State, Hostess Community College in the Bronx, Guilford, a former president of TOFS. Most of these people, when you read through their vetas, their accomplishments, it seems like they've all been on 60 Minutes at one time or another. These are real leaders in higher education. We talked about how to deal with trustees, the day-to-day operations and life of a president, how to build a leadership team, finance, strategic planning, institutional advancement, all those types of things. It was an honor for me to be able to attend, and I'd like to thank the college for enabling me to do that. At the end of the day, we shared two commonalities across higher ed. And the first one is, and this is basically what I've heard from, for example, you know, the president of Harvard and what have you, change. Institutions that either don't want to or can't do it aren't going to be around, or they're really going to be struggling. And even when you hear stories from places like Harvard with their, I believe, near $40 billion endowment, and talk about how they approach their finances, it's really remarkable what they've put themselves through. So change is a huge factor that was talked about, many of the same subjects that we've always talked about. You know, the revenues, the expense side, accountability, technology. Everyone is dealing with those same types of issues today, and everyone's struggling with it. And it's how they push them through a strategic planning process, and where they take that. It really makes one institution succeed, and the other one, not so much. But the ultimate deal that we all share is, we're all about students. And everybody is about student success. Some of those schools are doing, are executing programs that are really phenomenal, especially those in the urban areas. And, and I think that's something that we always hang our hat on, is what we strive to do to achieve student success. And I, and I will say that, after sitting for that period of time and listening to all these presidents, sitting presidents and first-year presidents, talk about their governing boards, and talk about the teams that they're working with, and the situations of their institutions, I have to say that I never felt better about being from this place. We are so fortunate in so many ways, and they're all talking about these challenges, and I'm sitting there thinking, "Man, we're really, we're pretty lucky," in a lot of different, in so many different ways. So, I think that hopefully we can all, we can all share that, because I wouldn't want to be anyplace else, and I wouldn't want to be working with anybody else, and I also, and I certainly wouldn't want to have a different kind of governing board than what we have. So I want to thank you all for that, and if you'd like to ask any questions, please feel free to do that, I'd welcome that.
Questions for Dr. Sobchak? Any requests for additional blowing smoke at the board?
When is Mr. Cook, is Mr. Cook going to be back for the next meeting?
Mr. Cook will be back for the next meeting. I thank you for taking the time to go to that. I mean, I know you wanted to do it, it was, it was part of what the board discussed as, as professional development. I suspect that everybody there learned something from you, and that you learned something from them, and that's why those are so valuable, and why Harvard is known for bringing people like that together to collaborate on change and challenge.
It was fascinating, the professors who, they're really the top scholars in higher ed, and their presentations, their lectures were unlike most, like any you've experienced in a sense of all the different types of media they incorporate, the content, the substance, but also the delivery. I mean, these, these professors were literally, it seems like they were jumping up and down, they were bending, I mean, they were just physically, they were so involved in what they were talking about. You can see why some of the best and brightest minds in higher ed are at Harvard. So, it was fascinating. Not unlike, not unlike when Deb Williams make a, makes a presentation to her class, so...
We can see that later, maybe. Okay. Next item on the agenda is old business. I'm not aware of any old business. I'm not aware of any new business. Reports from board liaisons. The first one is Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, where I am the liaison. Our next meeting is August 4th at 7:30 AM at the KU Cancer Center in Fairway. The only report I have is that sales tax revenues continued to be slightly above last year on a month-to-month basis, which is good. Foundation, trustee Sharp?
There is really no foundation report because we did not have a meeting on Tuesday, but they did want me to remind folks about October 18th, Beyond Bounds Electric, and the theme for this year is blue. So, pull out your favorite blue ties and blue dresses, and again, October 18th, Beyond Bounds Electric, it's the fundraising event for the Norman D. Center.
Questions about either the foundation or JASR, since I avoided questions. Report from Faculty Association, Dr. Williams.
Thank you for your compliment, President Sobchak. And while you were making that comment, I was actually jotting down some notes regarding Dr. Day's report. I mean, one of the, the things that I thought about as you referenced change and the need to be responsive, is I thought some of the data he presented might be reflective of our doing that very thing. Last semester, when it was identified that we had some challenges with enrollment, the data that Dr. Day presented was we're up in terms of student credit hours that they're actually taking. Maybe we're, we haven't moved, you know, much on the number of students, but perhaps one of the reasons why they're taking more credit hours is that they have credit hours available to them that is more accessible, whether online or different times of the day. I was part of that enrollment committee task force, and some of the things that we looked at, by the way, based on, in part, student impact, input, was accessibility and different, varying the times that these courses were offered. So I think that data may reflect our hitting the ground running when we identify a need, and that is something great about this institution. So, kudos to all of those who are involved in that, and I'm very happy to hear that the numbers are trending in the positive direction for our students. I jotted down something else, and this is sort of a, maybe more of a rhetorical question, not entirely rhetorical, but this had to, has to do with the information that was presented regarding the budget, and I promise, the rest of my report will be light and airy and brief, but, you know, with the challenges that we potentially anticipate with reduced cuts, I'm going to just throw this out there for, as a rhetorical question perhaps, unless someone wants to address it tonight, whether it's prudent for us to reduce the levy by 1/10, knowing that perhaps we have up to 10% decreases coming our way from the state. So, I know we have to publish the budget in August, and we have time between that, but it's just something I felt compelled to, to put out there, and so, it is. So...
You would have disappointed us if you hadn't done that.
Well, I hate to disappoint. So I'll transition into the light and airy part. It's been a pretty, actually, a pretty quiet, it's been quiet on the FA front this month, this past month. Some are wrapping, the summer faculty are wrapping up their summer courses, and we're all anticipating the start of the fall semester. The summer semester actually marked the complete transition to our new learning management system, away from Angel into D2L, and I have a note to recognize Vince Miller and Ed Lovett and the EdTech staff, who were very, very helpful in making that transition smooth. They helped navigate, faculty navigate some of the differences and the very nuanced aspects of D2L compared to what we all had been experiencing with Angel, and certainly through numerous training opportunities and their own personal time. The members of the EdTech staff was certainly very helpful to faculty to make the, this the best possible experience for our online students. As you've already gathered, I suppose, the featured topic of discussion at all of our board committees and among as many faculty as we've encountered on campus this summer was the Strategic Plan Implementation Process, and I've affectionately referred to this as SPI, S-P-I, which is just the acronym for us to remember, we need to. A key priority of the Faculty Association is to staff identify, essentially, faculty to serve on the 13 distinct projects that have been identified. And interestingly enough, there's a lot of communications already underway, and I'm actually in discussion with faculty about trying to find the best possible representatives to serve on those task force, because they are very targeted, and we want to give everyone the opportunity to step up and participate, and are looking forward, as the fall semester gets underway, of actually staffing those as requested, at least with a faculty presence. Faculty Association leadership is also looking forward to welcoming the return of our students and our faculty colleagues who have been, been gone since May. The annual FA LENS New Faculty Luncheon is also scheduled, so we're looking forward to welcoming new members of the faculty on August 8th at noon, and basically, we'll have members of the Faculty Association, KNEA staff, and perhaps a trustee or two, if you're interested, to attend to welcome our new faculty into the fold. This is at August 8th at noon, and we usually have this event in the in-focus room in, kind of down-under area in our cafeteria. And I should close by saying, I'm looking forward to transitioning to my sabbatical. I am leaving the FA in the able hands of Ron Pausik, which I would like Ron to please stand and wave to your fans. Ron is eager to get started with the role of FA president, and so he will have the pleasure of addressing the board in August and throughout the fall semester. So try not to miss me too much. I will be back in January, and probably else, you'll be, there'll be deb sightings throughout the fall as I stay up to, keep up with what's happening so that I can hit the ground running in the spring when I return. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and...
Trustee Cross?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. Dr. Williams, thank you for your concern about the mill issue. It is, of course, our responsibility to monitor that issue and vote on it. I share your concern. I do think it is, it is an interesting time. I do, however, have confidence that this board is working to do its best in a delicate dance with the state and related institutions to manage our budget. But I think you're wise to raise that issue, and I just wanted to lend my voice to your comment.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you for the faculty's participation in this product, because that, both in coming to this and then the "I" part of SPI, the implementation will require everybody, but obviously, the faculty are a large part of this campus and this tip of the spear with the students, so...
Absolutely.
Your, your help there is appreciated. We will miss you on sabbatical. I'm very glad I gave Mr. Pausik back his, the book that I'd borrowed two years ago so that I don't owe him anything. Actually, I still have a couple of your books, though. But, we will keep an eye on him in your absence.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good semester.
All right, we're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a time when we consider items of a routine nature that have been reviewed and recommended by staff, and take those all as one vote. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any trustee would like to be considered separately?
I would like to consider the grants separately.
All right, that would be item on the consent agenda, which is Roman numeral 12A3, Grants, Contracts, and Awards, pages 46 to 51. Okay, we will remove that from the consent agenda. Any other item that anybody wants to consider separately? If not, is there a motion on the balance?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda except for item 12A3. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? No opposing votes, passes unanimously. Trustee Stewart?
I'm just curious, I'd ask Dr. Anderson, I noticed we have a $273,000 grant from the US State Department on replicating community college's best practices in Pakistan. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
The, the, probably the greater beneficiary monetarily in the State Department is probably Pakistan, frankly. They approached me last year. Pakistan is trying to develop a community college system. One of their directors in education, I actually received a doctorate in the United States studying community college education, and they are trying to bring literacy to a, to a population that has very little access to education. They're looking for best practices. Originally, they had talked to two schools, ourselves and a college in Iowa. The college in Iowa decided to withdraw from that. I said we would continue to participate. We've been holding month, almost monthly meetings at 8:00 in the morning, 8:00 here in the morning is about 7:00 PM there. And so using one of our classrooms with live broadcast abilities, we have face-to-face conversations with the faculty and the directors of IBA Sucker, International Baccalaureate, or Business Administration Program in Pakistan. So their faculty have visited with our faculty primarily, especially in developmental education and English math and writing. There are six or eight, I think maybe a total of eight now, faculty who will be visiting our campus in September. We obviously cannot travel to Pakistan, and I didn't want to send anyone there right now. But anyway, there will be eight faculty from Pakistan coming to visit, and the monies from that grant are primarily going to sustain the travel to, you know, so they're able to come visit us and spend time here. There's a number of software programs that they're purchasing and that we're giving them advice on how to use, based in our reading and math and writing support programs. So the, the greater benefit, I think, for us at this time is not so much on the monetary side. We are getting some support for that, to help the, you know, to pay the faculty for the time that they've put into this project and the director's international head. Most of the equipment and so on this being purchased will actually end up in Pakistan, but the US State Department was very appreciative for the work that we've done with them in helping promote this. It's, at the beginning, about a year ago, actually, a, the former State Department Director that held the portfolio for Pakistan and Afghanistan, gave a presentation at the International Relations Council here in Kansas City, and pointed out that almost nothing in American relationships with Pakistan has gone smoothly. They need us, we need them, we, it's the sixth largest, you know, population in the world. It's a part of the world with nuclear capabilities. The United States needs to be engaged with Pakistan. And my conviction was that by participating in these kinds of conversations, we create that person-to-person sort of benefit that gives us a chance to, to make some real progress in some small, if humble, ways. But it's been an honor, frankly, for the, for Johnson County Community College to participate in those discussions, and I think there are some chances for some future conversations, and I think, but I think the real benefit is actually just helping make an improvement in the world where, where there needs to be a lot accomplished.
Joe?
In about a month, we're going to have representatives from the league here, and they're going to, and we're going to have to stand in front of them and talk about some of the incredibly innovative things that we do. And I think the opportunity, and I want to commend Andy for being such an integral part of this whole project, for us to be able to stand up there and say, "We're involved in such a, a most interesting and fascinating part of the world, and we're also taking a leadership role in that," reflects very well upon our institution and the faculty and everybody who's involved in this. It's a great opportunity for everybody. So I think we, this is something that we can certainly do with pride.
Okay. It was just interesting, I didn't know anything about it, so...
It's exciting. Trustee Sharp?
I have a follow-up question, I'm glad that you pulled the grants part out. I was noticing in my review that I don't ever remember a list this long.
No.
In the years that I've been here, is this normal? I don't remember that it's normal for the first part of a fiscal year, or 1.9 million dollars in grants in this list? Usually it's, we get some really cool grants, and there's four, five, six in each board packet, but dozens and millions of dollars. Can you give me some contacts?
Yeah, I mean, we've, this has been, you know, it's a direction the college has taken to actually seek grants. The Grant Department has, has really been looking for them, paying attention to them, and the faculty have stepped up when, when they've been called on. It's an opportunity, and many of these, I would say, really all the grants frankly, are great opportunities that, that bring faculty together... are great opportunities that, that bring faculty together to, to reflect on things that we can do in terms of innovation and, and opportunities. We've tried to, to do this in reasonably strategic ways, actually, where it's not just chasing money, but how do the grants really give us a chance to develop the programs that we're interested in? Darcy McGrath, who's, who's the director of that program, and, and Sarah Bishop, who's working there, have, have just been outstanding in the leadership they've shown in, in trying to keep us informed of grants that are available to us, and, and bringing us together to look at those when, when they provide us an opportunity.
Awesome, kudos to you, that's just amazing, thank you.
And I have to point out that this reflects a lot of fantastic work by those two, sadly, we've lost Sarah. I mean, she was a, a huge addition to the staff, but she's going to go work for the University of Kansas. And so, you know, for us to acquire and to keep talent here is always a challenge, because it ultimately it all comes down to people, and so I just want to underscore that. So, I'm sure we'll find a good replacement, but her departure, it sets you back, and so, but we need to get back on top of it.
Any other questions? I, I would just say, I think one of the reasons we added grants to the Management Committee Working Agenda was because of the enhanced emphasis on it, the enhanced need for grant funds as, as state funds are reduced, and then a need to make sure we're doing it strategically. So, I always look at the match, I love to see zero match, and we just get the money, but most of them are matched, and to make sure those work in conjunction with our academic programs, so that we're, we're actually, we're not just chasing the money, and I appreciate that comment.
And I think by working with the Management Committee on this, then next year you won't be surprised when you see a grant such as, as this one, because it really is unique.
Is there a motion to approve the Grants, Contracts, and Awards section of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are at the end of our formal agenda, we do have a, an executive session tonight. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, in consultation with an attorney which would be deemed, in the attorney-client privilege, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege and the board's communication with its attorney on legal matters. The session will last 20 minutes, and no action will be taken. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Tanya Wilson, Judy Korb, Terry Schlicht, Barbara Larson, and Mark Ferguson to join this executive session. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's start, do we need a short break? Let's, we'll start the executive session at 20 till 7:00 and conclude, no later than 7:00, 7:00 PM. 7:00 AM. We're back in open session as, as a board of trustees, after an executive session that lasted 20 minutes, no action was taken, no votes were taken, there's no further business, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion on a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.